Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Florence Brooks, Director of Resident Life and Wellness. I hope you got a program when you came in. We don't have microphones. I'm not sure if the folks that are streaming are able to hear us, but there's plenty of room in here. If you're not here, come up. There's lots of room. Thornton Wilder, in the play Our Town, wrote these words. "We can only be said to be alive in those moments when our hearts are conscious of our treasures." Will you pray with me? Holy One, awaken our hearts to all that surrounds us. In the midst of our creature comforts, may we be conscious of our treasures. In the midst of our abundance, may we grow in unexpected ways as individuals and as a community to be more than we are today. Bless the gift of this day, this gathering, and this community of Cedarfield. For this we pray. Amen.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for joining us today. The weather outside is not the most appealing, but it's nice and warm and dry here, and I'm grateful for that. Let's start off our meeting with some good news. Who has good news? It's a small crowd, so we need you to dig deep and find some good news. Anybody have a birthday this month? Anniversary? Charles?
Yes, it's been 27 years.
27 years? That's wonderful. How about anybody else back here? Birthday?
October.
Emily, your husband's birthday?
My husband's birthday was March 22nd. You're right.
And there's a big birthday party this weekend at Emily's house, and everyone's invited. Perky?
Well, it's kind of an odd way to say it, but if my husband was still alive, Sunday would be our 73rd anniversary.
So she doesn't have a microphone. I'll repeat it just in case people are listening. Oh, we do have a... Does this work? It sure does. Woo-hoo. Good news. We got a microphone. 73 years. 73 years, Perky and her husband would have been married if he was still alive. Any other good news? Yes, sir?
I have over at least three families that have had kids that are out of school every week in the booth.
Spring break in Cedarfield Pool. Good place to be for spring break. Anybody going on a spring break trip with kids, grandkids, family members? Nobody?
I wish.
No trips planned. Okay, anything else that we need to know about? Grandchildren, graduations? Lottery tickets, winning lottery tickets? I'd like to know about that. The Yankees are 4-1. Thank you for reminding me. That's good news for us Yankee fans. Okay. Well, I'm going to just start off and share that last week I was off Thursday. I spent the day in Washington. It was a day that I had planned since December because the trip to Washington was a gift from my daughter, Jordan. The gift was actually she bought us tickets to see the Brooklyn Nets, which is a basketball team, play against the Washington Wizards. The two teams are probably the worst teams in the NBA, but what great fun it was. I actually wish there was a hidden camera in that stadium because not only were we cheering as loudly as we could, we were dancing and singing and having the best time. The two young men who were sitting behind us nicknamed us March Madness. The game went into overtime, and surprisingly, we won because a seven-foot-two gentleman on our team hit a shot that was probably unlikely for him to hit. But we were very excited, and of course, the fans that were there were primarily Wizard fans. They weren't quite as excited as we were. But it was the fastest three hours I had spent in a long time. Think about that. Just being with someone who I really enjoyed, watching something unlikely happen just made the night go by so quickly. Well, the rest of the night we spent in an average hotel room in Washington, DC. We picked up Chinese food on our way back to the hotel and just stayed up late and gossiped and watched TV. It was great fun. The next day, we woke up early because my daughter works in DC. So she headed out to work at about 8:30, and I decided at that point that I would head out too with no plan whatsoever and just my iPhone. I walked for seven and a half miles. The only thing I had with me, yeah, it was great exercise. I had my cellphone and my Quest, which was to see all of the cherry blossoms that I possibly could see. I started. I made it to three Smithsonian's. I went to the World War II Memorial, to the Reflection Pool, to the Lincoln Memorial, to the Washington Monument, and the Title Basin. My feet didn't stop, and every cherry blossom I saw was nicer than the one I saw just before. It was truly amazing. I had been to DC to see the cherry blossoms about five years ago, and what a true gift it was then and again this year. As Jordan and I sat on our train, which was delayed three hours heading back to Richmond, I thought to myself that we shouldn't just put things on checkoff lists. Life doesn't come with a checkoff list. Just because you have seen something once doesn't necessarily mean you have seen it 100 times. Each time can be completely different or just as spectacular as the year before. Even though our train was delayed three hours and my feet were hurting and my eyes were tired, my heart was full. I had my best girl sitting next to me talking nonstop about her day at work and 300 pictures of cherry blossoms on my phone. Who could ask for more? Thank you all for being here. We have a pretty full agenda. I will start off by sharing that we typically meet the first week of the month. May is going to be a little bit different, and we'll get something out on Channel 974 as well as in writing so that everybody knows. Our corporate office, Kevin Selmanian, who is our CFO, will be doing a presentation with James Green as well as David Taylor the last week in April about finances, the budget, and rate increases. So we'll use that as our town hall meeting for the month of May because it'll probably be on the 29th or the 30th of the month. But more information about that will come out, like I said, in writing as well as on Channel 974. Just wanted to make sure that those of you who are here can mark your calendars because I know that that's an important meeting for you. Okay, Emily, you're first.
Hello. Okay. So we're going to start with our new resident introductions. So sharing with you who has moved to the community since our last town hall and sort of where we are with our occupancy. So since last month, we have welcomed four new families. We have two of them in cottages and two in the apartments. You have Bob and Donna Koenig, and they are in 2145 Cottage on the Lane. Harriet Thomas, who's moving in today. And we're very excited to have Harriet join us. She is in Apartment 213. Steve and Bobby Thomas, who are moving into 2149 on the Lane. And then Earl and Dorothy White, who are moving into Apartment 319 next Friday. So we're very excited to have them. We're also closing on two additional apartments this month, and that is Georgia Kiteley, and she is moving in... Excuse me. She's moving into Apartment 385 in the D-Wing. And Stacy Vonville, who's moving into Apartment 136. Coming up in May, we have three families who are joining the community. And then for June, we have 15 families that are reserved and in process. So that means they are in the application process right now, so they are completing the financial and the medical assessments. So it may not be that 15 families are joining us in June, but that's what we're slated to do at this time. So that I'm very excited to share. We've been stuck in 94%, 95% reserved and occupied for the last several months, but we are officially at 96% reserved and occupied as of now. So a lot of work happening in our marketing office. And then for anybody who hasn't seen our slides, we do have two marketing events coming up this week and next week. So the first event will be tomorrow, and then the exact same event is going to take place again next Wednesday. And that is for prospective residents who are coming in to hear from a panel of about seven residents per day to answer questions about any moving advice that they have and of course to share what it's like to live behind that front gate. So we have some prepared questions for the residents to answer that we hope will generate some great conversation. And then following the Q&amp;A portion of the event, we'll be finishing up with lunch in Cedar Grill. So if the Cedar Grill seems particularly chaotic tomorrow for lunch, that is why. And that is all I have for you today. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I sometimes see people when they come to campus. It's a lot to cover. Have you ever thought about getting one of those nice little golf carts like they use at apartment complexes that you can put through for people on and take them around and really show them?
Yes, the question is about golf carts. Do we have... Have we considered getting golf carts or a car, something to get people around the community? The answer is yes. We are talking about it, although I don't think that the budget is going to allow for it. But it's something that we constantly bring up. All right, that's everything from me. I'll hand it over to Brittany.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. For those that don't know me, I try not to hide in healthcare, but sometimes that's inevitable. My name is Brittany Ingram Atkins, and I'm the Healthcare Administrator. So just one brief update that I have for you. Next week, on Monday and Tuesday, healthcare will have a mock survey that's going to take place and be done by one of our consultant agencies. So they will be on campus here to do a mock survey for us, and that is to get ready for our actual survey. And we are currently in that window. So that's what we're gearing up for in healthcare. Any questions about that? Yes, ma'am?
When they do the actual survey, do they announce they're coming or do they give you a window and they just show up one day?
Great question. So the question is, do they announce when they're coming when they come to do the actual survey? The short answer is no. We have a survey window, and that's just kind of based on when they did the last one. So our last survey was in May of last year, so we're in that window again. But no, they do not. Any other questions? What am I passing off to next, Amy?
Hello, everyone. My name is Lauren Burnett, and I am Assisted Living Administrator, so her counterpart on the other side of Health Services. So last week, Assisted Living and Memory Care had our quarterly oversight review, which is essentially an audit of resident charts is really what it is. They'll look at things, for example, like admission documentation, discharge documentation, to make sure that we are in compliance with our regulations. That's what it's designed to do. So we had 28 resident charts between Memory Care and Assisted Living that were looked at, and we got really, really positive feedback about how everything was looking. So that was great news for us. And our next one will be scheduled in June of this year. And really what it's designed to do is to help us gear up for our annual inspection, which is not due through Department of Social Services until the fall. So that's closer typically to October or November. And that's similarly to healthcare based on when our last one was, when our license is up for renewal. They typically show up in that window, but it is also unannounced as well. Any questions for me? Yes?
I was wondering, how many residences aren't occupied in...
Sure. So the question was about Assisted Living's occupancy level. So as far as Memory Care goes, we are full. 20 out of 20 apartments that are filled with residents. In Assisted Living side, we have a total of 67 apartments, all occupied once again. Two are actually respite rooms. So we keep those open for those who really need short stays. So maybe it's a brief recovery after a procedure or something along those lines. So currently, both of those rooms are open and available. One on fourth floor, really immediately across from where we are now, and one on third floor. Anything else? Thank you. And then Leah will be next up.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Leah Lemmons Little. I'm the Director of Nursing for Health Services, and that includes healthcare and assisted living, and you've met my partners. I just have a couple of updates for you as well. I wanted to share, I always talk about COVID and infections and things like that. We've been doing amazing. I do know there's a community that has norovirus, so I'm feeling really great that we don't. And I do believe that that's a direct result of what you all are doing here, and we are as team members, and that's distancing and hand washing and just basic universal precautions. So right now, we did have one team member that tested positive outside of the community for COVID this past weekend. She is feeling fine. And so you'll see on Poppy Place that we're wearing surgical masks to protect ourselves. She hasn't been in the building for quite some time, but we're still taking those precautions. We have one more day of testing, which is tomorrow. So if everybody is negative still, then we can get rid of our masks. Okay? So again, thank you for what you're doing to keep us all safe and healthy. The other thing I wanted to share is we've talked about satisfaction surveys. So when a resident comes and stays in healthcare or respite stay, as Lauren mentioned, in assisted living, we want to know how we did with the admission, meaning the welcome, and with the goodbye, meaning your discharge. So we just really got started with that and have a few numbers or a few, I should say, surveys with good numbers and good feedback. We have some opportunities, not all nursing, but I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus. I'm kidding. But anyway, we have some opportunities. We're learning, we're welcoming. Neil always has a joke for us, so I'll just give it a little back for him. And so it's going really well. It's going really well. So please keep the feedback coming. And I also wanted to just go off script just a little bit because we have some successes to share, and that is with some of our CNAs who have passed their Registered Medication Aid exam. And so you may see some new faces, which we've hired some new med techs, and then also some congratulations to the CNAs who've worked really hard and were really patient with the state of Virginia to get their testing date and then, you know, sit down and actually get the results. So if you see some new faces, please say hi. The name tags really work for all of us. So do you have any questions for me? Yes, sir?
Are we fully staffed now in the nursing area?
So we have a couple part-time roles that we're working on filling, but we're interviewing. Now, we did have some interviews that didn't come today, I think, because of the weather, but just a few. It's not a whole lot of vacancies. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you. I am handing the mic to Michael Ray Caitlin.
Hi, everyone. I'm Caitlin Seiler. I'm the Associate Executive Director for Cedarfield. I just have two things to update you on for Health Services. The first is our iStat lab machine that was purchased through our Innovation Fund. We have been able to get that machine updated and have ran some successful trial tests through it. So that has been a success so far. We do have education still in process for our clinical team. It sounds like we have weakened supervisors that we still need to do that education for before we can get it fully into play in our healthcare area. Our physicians are aware that the iStat machine can and should be used for stat labs where appropriate, and we are looking forward to getting this fully integrated into our clinical procedures, which will help us with our clinical decision-making when somebody has a changing condition. The second thing I wanted to talk about is to piggyback on Leah's satisfaction survey area that she was talking about. So in discussions with residents, families, and our healthcare committee, then it was voiced that further data on satisfaction could be beneficial for Health Services as a whole. So we did implement admission satisfaction survey and discharge satisfaction surveys that slowly producing outcomes for us. We look forward to being able to track that data and know where we can improve on throughout our Health Services area. And we look forward to being able to, at some point, implement a survey that is for our long-term care residents aside from the We Care Connect survey that gives us a little bit more feedback throughout the stay in Health Services as we know that things can change, and we want to always get that feedback from residents and families. We encourage the feedback. That way, we know where we can improve on. Any questions for me? All right, I'll hand it over to Amy.
Thank you.
So those of you who were expecting Steve Nelson and are disappointed, I'm sorry. He is at Windsor Me today, but gave me a list of things that he suggested that I discuss with the group. One is our signage project update. So for those of you who have come to meetings in the past, you know that we are basically undertaking a two-phase signage project. The first is the outside signage, which we call wayfinding, and the second is the internal signs throughout the building. So we have actually created a list of all the outside signs that we want to have replaced. They've been branded, and they've been sent to the sign maker, Acorn Sign, to fabricate for us. So we're looking for an installation probably early June. It was a major project, but I promise you, when your guests and your friends come to see you here at Cedarfield, they'll know where the Parkview entrance is now. They'll also know where the healthcare center is because the signs are big and they're bright, and they will show in the dark. And I think that everyone will be pleased once they're installed. The second phase of the project is a little bit more complicated because it entails every room in the building that has a sign in front of it. So we have a very good list. We've been working a little bit with some members of the Communication Committee as well as some residents who were involved in the initial attempt to get signage correct in this building about two years ago. And those signs will be ordered once we have a clear understanding that the signs read exactly the way we want them to read and that it's something that we use consistently in our Channel 974 communications as well as our newsletter. So our hope for that is that we will also have that underway and sent off to the sign maker within the next 30 days or so. And the installation for that will probably be closer to July than June. But we're excited to have things labeled correctly and also have maps that will coordinate with that so that people know where they're going when they come into this building because it's pretty easy to get lost here. Many of us have gotten lost here, including me. So that's sign update. The lobby and Fellowship Hall renovations are on schedule. I am so fortunate because this is my second project in a row. I did one at permitted Richmond, that the construction team was on schedule. That's not typical for big projects. But the Fellowship Hall looks wonderful. The hallways are near complete. The chapel is being worked on now, and the restroom is to, I guess you would say, behind the concierge area or the area of focus right now. Once they're done there, they will work their way towards the library as well as the fourth floor where the library is, and the project will conclude up the hallway heading towards where the clinic is. So we're on schedule. We're projecting a finish date of early June. They understand that we need the Fellowship Hall for the election in June because that's really important. But I also told them we need the Fellowship Hall for the town hall meeting in June. So I remind them of that every Thursday when we have our touch base meeting. So more to come about that schedule. D-Wing generator. Has anybody seen the D-Wing generator? It is one of the best-looking generators I've ever seen. It's absolutely amazing. I was at a conference last week, actually. It was a retreat with the Pinnacle Living team, and the team here, the construction team, was so excited. They sent me numerous pictures of it. It is not up and working yet. We're close to that. Once it is, we will let everybody know that D-Wing is on the generator. And once that power is hooked up, we will move forward with the electric car spots, which will be located right next to the generator. So those two things go hand in hand. We're almost at the completion point of that. And I know for those of you who have lived on D-Wing for a while, it's been a long time coming. So glad to share that information. And the last thing on his roof, on his list, is the roof. Cottage roofs. About two years ago, we started a project that we started to replace all of the roofs on the cottages. I think we have 18 left, and one of those is also the clubhouse. So those are scheduled to begin within the next few weeks. I actually think they might have started already. I wish he was here. I would ask him to confirm that for me. But for those of you who live in cottages whose roofs have not been replaced yet, you're on the list, and it's going to happen soon, I promise you. And he was really excited about all of these things. So if you have any questions that I can't answer, know that Steve will be back tomorrow and happy to answer any questions that you have. Any questions about those items?
Well, not that, but the removing of the wallpaper painting and doing the ceiling work, it seems to have come to a halt.
So right now, it's the end of our budgeted year, and we are juggling probably seven different capital projects. That is one that we will start to do and will also be carried over to next year's budget because it's time, right? We have the same wallpaper up on those walls since we opened, and the lighting needs to be improved as well. We will start on the first floor of C-Wing because that is the area that sees the most traffic because it's a direct route to the café. So unfortunately for those who live there, that will be where everyone comes to see what it's going to look like because that's going to be like the model hallway. But that will begin soon. And again, like I said, that would be a good place for you to see what it's going to look like, the lighting in particular, throughout the community. Good question. Thank you.
A question on the generator. For, I don't know how many months they've been working on this, maybe four. The C-Wing has had a lot of problems with the parking spots. And it seems to me now that the generator is in, if they're going to make some minor changes to without having to bring in a bunch of trucks, et cetera, to park, why aren't we releasing those parking spots that have been taken?
The ones that are close to the generator?
Yeah. And there's eight of them, eight or ten.
That's a significant amount. I'll ask. I'll have, actually, tomorrow is my meeting with the contractors on Thursday, so I'll ask if we can do that, at least temporarily until we're up to the, you know, hooking up the electric cars. Yes, ma'am?
I don't know what to deal with in any damage they did to carpet, but they did some damage that they didn't have enough carpet to repair on second floor of D-Wing. So you need to get a carpet guru in there and see if they can play with it and do something to it.
Okay, I'll go look and see. We work pretty closely with DMA carpets, and they usually have in reserve replacements. I'll make sure that we have that. Any other questions for Steve Nelson? Okay, thank you all. Next is dining and Neil.
Hey, good day, everybody. Hello to everybody in our dining room. And to Leah, what were you saying before? I just got a couple things. One, I love nursing. I love your daughter. She works great. Everybody, have you met Faith down in the café? She works weekends. She's helpful out, helpful down there? Your dining? Yeah, we have it going on. Who attended Easter? Everybody? Everybody have Easter? All your relatives were here? Everybody enjoyed themselves? We had about 300. And down for dinner in the café, we had 122. So it was quite busy. So, it was quite busy. With regards to destination dining, we are moving forward, meeting regularly with my team, who's headed by Steve and Chef Tyrone. We're going over different destinations. Steve has gotten in a lot of linen samples and uniform samples. So, we're really excited as this builds. We can see a picture as we move more and more. And with the dining committee, and our most important tasters there, they're helping out there as well. With regards to what we're doing now in the cafe, Tanika and her team, they are starting to really drill down and provide some healthy items. You do something small, like getting a whole wheat bun, and suddenly, everybody's ordering turkey burgers and black bean burgers down there. We're also looking at a container that we're going to be able to do grain bowls and rice bowls. So, make things, you know, healthy options that you have. And there's, so looking forward to that. Down in the cafe as well, we're looking into very soon having a credit card machine down there. And that's going to coincide with the one that's going to go in the gift shop as well. And what this will do is it'll, members like your family, if they want to come down and just use a credit card, they could do that. Or staff dining, staff members can come down. And it wouldn't interfere with anything going on with the register now. But it just gives more options, grab and go. It's really exciting, what we're thinking of down there. Full count, I believe, most of the situations we were having with some of the building processes and things have been taken care of. Please see with my team, either Steve or Claire about that, or any challenges that you have. Sissy in the business office lets us know as well. And healthcare, it's also the year of dining, the healthcare as well. We have a new team member who transferred from the kitchen. Chef Cory Clanton is now on the team, along with Keisha Jefferson-Ardis. And so, we have a full team. And we're getting ready, not only for the mock survey, but we're doing things that are going to be more consistent, more fresh foods to you and your loved ones down there. So, it's very exciting as well. Are there any questions at this time? Well, thank you all very much, and we'll see you around pre-bye, everybody. I believe Sharon is next.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have already started our offering service for deep cleaning. And it's coming up also for month of April. It's going to be for the fourth floor, D-Wing, and also the entire fourth floor, and also first floor, A-Wings. These services are included, pulling out your refrigerator to clean behind it, your spray and comfort washing, turning your mattress blind washing, and also add on, if you like your carpet, because I've been getting a lot of calls by carpet cleaners, so we can go ahead and add that on too. And also, if y'all are interested, you can call housekeeping if you want these services done. And also, I'd like to talk to y'all about window cleaning. I get a lot of calls about window cleaning. Yes, you can get your windows cleaned now, but after the pollen's gone, you're going all the way down to the bottom of the list. Because if that would be fair, you all get your windows cleaned then, I have to put you back on schedule. So, for my advice from that, you can wait, please. If not, you can go ahead and get it, just put me back in the water. Okay? Any question? Thank you.
Miss Amy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hello, everyone. I'm Stephanie Burkin. I'm the Human Resources Director here at Cedarfield. I just wanted to let you know that on April 19th, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., we are going to be having a Skills and Safety Fair for team members. And so, what this does is it allows team members to catch up on any training that they missed throughout the year, and to make those up at this time. So, it'll be again on April 19th, from 4:00 p.m., or 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that's all I have. Any questions? Florence is next.
Thank you, Stan. I'm Florence Wilkes, Director of Resident Life and Wellness. I want to begin by sharing with you that we have a new chaplain on board, joining Trish Carter and Margaret Ernstus, Madison Cody, began this week. And she will, she's an orientation today and tomorrow. But please introduce yourself to her as you see her about campus. Secondly, our salons. Thank you all so much for your patience. As we've gone through this transition, our men stylist, Don Evans, began this past Monday. He had 14 appointments on Monday. He will be here every other Monday. Persons in licensed areas, just let their recreation staff know. You can leave an appointment with him, and he will make arrangements to come back at another time to see those residents. Trace, Tracy Antonia will be in the Independent Living Salon beginning this Friday. On Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, you can make appointments directly with her. She will also be in the Healthcare Salon on Wednesdays. Again, those appointments will be coordinated through Recreation Staff. And then, we have Mary Shears, who will be here on Tuesdays in Merry Care and Assisted Living. Again, those appointments can be coordinated through Recreation Staff. So, we're very excited about these changes. And these staff are very excited about being here and continuing these relationships with residents. Many of you already know both Tracy and Donna. Secondly, or thirdly, this is Volunteer Appreciation Month, and we'll be having a social to thank our volunteers on April 24th, from 9:30 to 10:30 in the Atrium Cafe. This last quarter, over 178 Cedarfield residents reported volunteer hours for a total of 4,202 hours from December to February. So, volunteerism is alive and well. And that's just looking at Cedarfield residents. We're excited also that we're slowly creating opportunities for people beyond the Cedarfield community to come and volunteer here, and are excited about what they're bringing to our community. Lastly, this month is the focus for Pathways to Wellness for Creative Expression. Our Pathways to Wellness philosophy has 10 domains of wellness. One of those is creative expression. Our April focus includes music, painting, drama, pottery, watercolor crafts, floral design, and glasswork, and so much more. These are just a few of the ways you can give voice to your creative self. Many residents have shared how much, how they have discovered a part of themselves that they did not know they had, a talent that was latent within them. And they came to Cedarfield and discovered that they could paint, or they could take pictures, or they could create pottery. In fact, one resident recently was sharing how, that she's so excited about this, that if we would let her, she would sleep in the Creative Expression studio. We're not doing that. I believe creative expression often gives one's life meaning and purpose. It's been a joy, and continues to be a joy, how many people do find such a sense of self and purpose through their creativity. If you're interested and haven't begun to explore this, please reach out to Whitney Hales, our Creative Expressions Coordinator, and take a class, and discover, and unnum-gift, and create. Thank you so much. I'd like to introduce you to Charles Wickham, who will be giving you a philanthropy update.
Good afternoon. I'm Charles Wickham. I'm the Director of Don development for Pinnacle Living. And I'm here at Cedarfield, usually on Wednesdays. And, you know, we have been experiencing on and off rain today. And all I can think is, April showers, spring...
May showers.
Well, May is such a wonderful month. I know we got 30 days until we get there, but we also have a lot of other wonderful events that happen in May. It's Mother's Day, my wife's birthday, my birthday. We also here at Cedarfield are going to have a month of giving. Yay! We're very excited. We're going to try and offer, each week in the month of May, we're going to be highlighting a different donor restricted fund, and giving everyone the opportunity, if you so choose, to participate in supporting that fund. And we're very excited that the very first week that we have, which will be May the 5th through the 11th, we will be celebrating and lifting up the Cedarfield Samaritan Program. For the last several weeks, many of you have been enjoying the artwork down at the atrium breezeway of Florence Tromator. Well, there's also something else that she likes to do, as well as art. And that is quilting. Charlotte Bailey approached me not long ago about that Florence had this quilt that she would like to donate to be auctioned off. So, during that first week, not only are we offering you the opportunity to give a donation toward the Samaritan Program here at Cedarfield, but also, we would love for you to be a part of a silent auction. The quilt will be on display on the fourth floor, right outside of dining. And there will be a little sign-up sheet there that you can put your name and your bid that you have. And I hope that you will honor Florence and dig deep in your pockets, deep in your pockets, because this is absolutely an exquisite quilt. Several of you that are here in the ring with us came up and looked at it before the meeting began, and commented on the hand-stitching that she did, and how close they are, and the precise, just absolutely amazing. And I do invite you to please take a look at it when it is on display. The second week of May, the 12th through the 18th, we will be highlighting the Cedarfield Scholarship Fund. And, you know, you invest so much in the educational journey of the team members, and so, we want to highlight that. The third week, May the 19th through the 26th, we're actually going to deviate and have two funds available. The Cedarfield Flower Fund, as well as the Cedarfield Library. So, those two will both be available on that third week of May. And then, the last week, which is May the 26th through June the 1st, you know, with all the construction going on, we're looking forward to an absolutely amazing sound system that will be going into the Fellowship Hall. Some of you have been very generous and have given monies toward that through our technology fund. We have someone, one of the residents here, who approached me last week to do a matching challenge for this fourth week. They're willing to challenge to be matched up to $30,000. So, the system itself is quite expensive. And I hope that you will please take a look at this and take advantage, for Cedarfield, of this challenge that's being offered for the technology for that sound system. You'll be seeing more about this on Touch Town. We'll be having slides each week, talking about, and explaining all of the funds, what they're about, all of those type of things. You'll have some communications we put in your mailboxes. And we're also going to have little cards around that chair each week of what that fund will be used for. So, just if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call or send me an email. But while I'm here, any questions? Yes?
I just had a comment. I think it's a wonderful idea to let the residents know what these funds are, because those of us who have made contributions to it, because we see a need. And if there was a special project, I'm sure that the people would contribute towards that. And particularly now with the IRAs available for charitable deductions, it's an opportune time to set up these funds and to fund different aspects of Cedarfield that maybe Pinnacle can't afford to fund, or whatever.
Right. Thank you, Mrs. Arnie. He was talking about how important it is for us to have an understanding of each of these funds, and how the monies is used, and the benefactors that will be receiving and benefit from these funds. And also, right now, we are able to use a number of different options in funding. And one of those is our charitable, I don't know, required minimum distributions through IRA. And so, those can be used. I'll be more than glad to talk with you if that's something that you would be interested in. But just think seriously about this, and we would greatly appreciate your help and guidance in this. So, I'm going to turn things over to Amy.
Okay, I am back to wrap things up before we turn it over to Frank Miller for his council report. I hate to say this, but our Medicare number update is about where we were last month. We have been having regular communications through the corporate office and our attorneys. So, we think we are proceeding in the right direction. About two weeks ago, we had a surprise visit, and it was from a Medicare organization here to take pictures of our therapy room. So, to me, that's a good sign. They're wrapping everything up, in my mind, and are ready to give us that number. As soon as we have that number, we'll have a big party, so everybody will know we have it. We Care Connect reminders. We continue to ask you to please answer the call, the email, or the text message when We Care Connect reaches out about satisfaction. I take that very seriously. Some of you know that if you either make a mistake and answer something incorrectly, or answer it in a way that I need to respond to it, you'll either hear from me or one of the directors within probably three or four days at the most. It's important that you answer those calls and let us know where we need to improve. But also, what we're doing great. It gives me great pride to be able to say to a team member, "I just got a survey back, and your name was in it." And it was for something wonderful you did. So, please take the time to fill those out and let us know how we're doing. Capital project review, I think I said a little earlier, we have numerous projects happening right now. The two that are coming up that will affect residents, I think, greatly are, one, the clinic renovation, that we are way overdue for. Personally, I think that should have been at the beginning of the project. That will happen as soon as we are done with the Fellowship Hall renovation. So, we're looking at June, July at this point. And what we are doing now behind the scenes is working up a plan, so that we can move the services out of the clinic, and move them someplace else on campus, so that we can get into that clinic and turn it around pretty quickly. The contractors have said that if we could vacate the clinic, we can have it done in probably four to six weeks. If we don't, it might take three to four months. So, it might be a little painful for three to four weeks, or four to six weeks, but I think that, you know, we're resilient. We've lived through worse before. We'll make it as easy for you as you can, but we think that there's great value in just taking it offline for a short period of time. So, more to come about that. The other renovation that will affect many residents is the clubhouse renovation. So, we've been going back and forth about days and private events and parties there. What I think we are going to do moving forward is we are going to keep that clubhouse open until the day after Garden Day in May. So, that can happen in the clubhouse. But as soon as that's over, we will put a lock on that door and start construction behind the scenes as quickly as we can. We're hoping that that, too, will take about four to six weeks to do, so maybe by the 4th of July. But I think the end result will be something that everybody will like and be proud of, and the space will be used more. So, excited about that renovation as well. Maintenance director update. Kate, remind me of the number? 373 applicants, since we started hosting that position in the beginning of January. We do have one good candidate now that's coming in next week. I will share, anybody who has a hammer and tape measure thinks that they're qualified for the position. I think that's why we've had so many applicants. But we have one coming in next week. Everybody cross their fingers that we love him. And if we do, we'll have him come back and meet with some of the residents, as well as the team members, just to make sure he's a good fit on our team. But his resume is very promising. So, looking forward to meeting him next week. Frank, were you going to talk about the traffic light? Then I am not going to. I'm going to just hand this microphone right on over. So, one quick thing, as he's walking up. We have decided, with some advice from the Safety Committee, that moving forward, probably every other month, we're going to give you a safety spotlight about living here at Cedarfield. So, I will just start off with a public service announcement, and that is, please consider wearing your pennies. wearing your pendants. Your pendants are there to help keep you safe and get you help in case of an emergency, but they're also there to help get other people safe in case of an emergency. So even if you don't use it for yourself, and let's say you're outside walking and you see someone who might have stumbled and fallen, you could press that pendant and somebody will come and help them. So if you don't have it on now, and you have it on your dresser at home, the next time you see it, please think about putting it on, either around your neck or on your wrist, because I think it will make you feel better about security here and knowing that there might be somebody there to help you quicker if you press that button.
Does it work in the pond?
It does not work in the pond. Ready? Thank you.
One thing I may add to that about the pendants is, according to Steve Nelson, they do work almost everywhere on campus for the reason, not just in this building, they work in cottages. And because of the court and lane being near the cottages, they are probably going to work if something were to happen to you in the vicinity of cottage. I mentioned at the residents council meeting that I'm still learning, one of the things that I should have known but weren't today is if my name is on here. But a couple of things, thanks to a couple of people that are smarter than I am, the minutes got out on time, they were out before the end of the week for the last residents council week. And so you might want to thank those people, but they are out with one exception, the minutes for the dining committee did not make it there, somewhere in digital space, but they are now in hands and will be to you very soon. Thanks to Beth Long and Joy Nettin. A couple of things to add on the traffic signal, a couple of things that happened this past week. One, the poles are now in the hands for the traffic signals, are now in the hands of the county. And secondly, last Wednesday night, the Board of Supervisors approved the contract for the installation of the poles and lights. So one thing I would recommend to you, the project will have a widening of the entrance and the exit lane from Cedarfield. Right now, particularly that exit lane is very narrow. So when the traffic signal gets in, be careful going in and out. If you have to wait for somebody to go in front of you, that's probably not a bad idea because I'm sure you all know how narrow those are. A couple of good new things, just talked about traffic signal. The last one I'd like to share with you is I spent Saturday afternoon with a group of Boy Scouts, one being my grandson, who completed the turtle float, and it's now floating, if you want to see, in the pond. There may be some adjustment to it so that the turtles will find it, but the float is in, and it was a lot of fun working with those kids. Any reflections about the residents council? Thank you.
Just making sure everyone's still awake. Thank you all for joining us. Another question?
Yeah, well, I have a statement.
Okay, a statement.
Today, when I was coming in on campus, there was an individual car in front of me. The gate was down. It made a left at the cut through and a right on the outgoing out lane and went up to, from Cedarfield Parkway to the lane. And the security ended up going and getting them and ran them back out. But just beware, if you're coming down the lane, that there's crazy people out there.
There's crazy people on the roads everywhere, even at Cedarfield.
This is the first time I've ever seen.
It's the first time I've heard it done. Sometimes I look out my window and people are going the wrong way in the circle in front of my window, but I've never heard about somebody dropping out of this area. Any other questions, Ms. Katz?
I have not a question, but I want a statement with regard to marketing. I know we're having two events this week, next week, or in the following weeks. I think meetings like this, Cedarfield apart, that every month, we have everybody sitting here reporting to us and answering questions. There are very few communities that are that inclusive.
Well, thank you. Thank you. So communication at Cedarfield is good, and if you ever question something or think that we have a better way of communicating, please let us know. We'll stick around after the meeting if anybody has any individual questions. If not, thank you for joining us, and stay dry.